Hey, Ms. Ross, you're all set.
Thank you. We are going to call this public hearing on Monday, June the 7th.
Hey, Ms. Ross, you're all set.
Thank you. We are going to call this public hearing on Monday, June the 7th. To order, Ms. Senski, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Rosskovic.
Here.
Mr. Spielman.
Here.
Mrs. Foglio.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Timmonier.
Here.
Oh, Ms. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
And Mrs. Church is with us.
Here.
All right. Thank you. All right, the purpose of this public hearing tonight is to add a new zoning district called Lakefront Residential Zone for the north side of Walnut Boulevard. This is currently zoned R1 residential. At this time, what we have done is we've made some changes. The Planning Commission has made some changes to the residential zoning in that area. And we have been getting input from residents in the form of letters and correspondence. So, Mr. Timmonier and Ms. Church are going to give us a little history, I think, as to how we got to this point and why we got to this point.
Sure, Mr. President, thank you. So, as most of you know, there was a construction of an addition on the north side of Walnut Boulevard, probably started last year sometime. And what we have found during this process, and a lot of people did come both to you as council and us up here as the administration, you know, complaining about this, about the size of it, that it was blocking views of the lake for those residents on the north side of Walnut Boulevard. And based on the current zoning that we have, there was nothing to prevent the structure from being built as it stands today. Now, as this project progressed, and Ms. Church can attest to this, we did put several stop work orders on this project, thinking that certain portions of the project were outside the scope of the zoning. For instance, the height of it, you know, we were kind of all sitting back going, gosh, that has to be too tall. Thirty-five foot is the height requirement. It's the maximum height requirement within the district. We shot the elevation of the house and it fell underneath the thirty-five foot mark. So, there was nothing that it required any type of variance for setbacks as far as off the property lines on both the east and west side or the north or the south side towards the road. All the setback requirements were met for the property. So, you know, the way that it is constructed, the height and everything of it, the size of it, of our current legislation right now that's on the books is permitted, and that can be done anywhere within that district or pretty much actually anywhere within R1, as long as it meets all the setback requirements and all of this, all, everything that's laid out in the zoning for R1 within our current legislation, our current codified ordinances. So, we set out, obviously, you know, unfortunately, this was, you know, in my opinion, and I'll stand by it, this was taken advantage of. This could have been done a lot differently. Once we issue that zoning permit, the County Building Department takes over from there. The County Building Department reviews all the plans. We see the basic footprint, and we do have a copy of those plans. But all we're doing is certifying that this falls within the zoning ordinance that we have under the zoning laws of the city of Ashdabula, and that it meets all of those things and that construction can begin. And that's what we did in this case. So, as this has progressed, obviously, there are residents that don't want this to happen next door to them, which is where we came up with proposed legislation that you have in front of you. We did scour a lot of different communities to see what they had for lakefront zoning ordinances. We did find some, and that's how we incorporated that into the first one. I think we let this sit with you guys after bringing it through Jane's Committee for a while to get input back and forth. We didn't get much input. We did bring it to the Planning Commission. They didn't have much input on it. They all liked the idea and were aware of the situation, wanted to protect the lakefront zoning there as well. So, that's why it was then scheduled for this public hearing. We've got thirty days. We've got a lot of great input on this now, which is good. So, there are still things that we can do to this ordinance before council considers passing it to modify it and make it better. But, you know, in reading a lot of the comments, I wanted to give that history because I think there's a lot of misinformation on how this whole thing got here. You know, there was no favors done. There was no looking the other way on things. This construction, and trust me, we did not, as this thing progressed, we did not want to see this thing built like this. We kept on referring back to our zoning ordinances, putting stop work orders on the property, but yet it fell within all the parameters of today. And if somebody came in with similar plans for another property on Walnut Boulevard tomorrow, we would have to issue that permit and say it's correct. So, that is why we've proposed this based on some of the residents that came to us early on and said, we've got to do something to prevent this. I'm sure most people that live along that lakefront district would agree that they don't want it next to them. I completely understand that people think that we're invading on their property rights and different things like that. It's really more of a protection, I think, for all of the property owners along Walnut Boulevard. This is not being done to preserve a view for the public, which I think was one of the comments in in one of the letters that came. This is strictly for the neighbors on both sides of a certain resident that would want to, that would have something like this happen next to them. I think, I mean, that's a quick, real high-level overview of why we got to this point today. You know, obviously, like I said earlier, this is not set in stone until council approves it. So, we're more than happy to keep working on it with all the input that we've received, hold other hearings on this, whatever we need to do. Or if it's something that the residents don't want, then we can continue as the zoning is today. That is also an option. So, that's why we're here. Mary, I don't know if I've missed anything, but please chime in if there's anything that you would want to add to this. I know that you've been extremely heavily involved in this process, so.
I think you've covered everything. I guess I would, as you stated, make mention that we did put numerous stop work orders on this project to ensure that all of the zoning rules were being followed.
And I will echo what Jim has mentioned. I know I, as a counselor, had received several different concerns from citizens about what was going on there, what was being built, why is it being built such fashion and so forth. So, it, that sort of was an impetus for why we are going through all this. Now, as Mr. Timmonier says, we've received a lot of additional input. Probably if this was post-COVID, we could have, like I said, we could have, this may have been handled in a different fashion. And as we, Mr. Franklin, I believe, will tell us, in July, we will go back to our in-person meetings, and so maybe this will work itself out in a different fashion. Any counselors have anything they'd like to add before we go on?
Well, I, Mr. President, I, I've lived across the street from this for two years, and Mr. Manager, I have to correct you. It's been two years that the construction has been going on. It's very unfortunate. And we've gotten two good letters. One from Mr. Giddo and another one was from a Mr., oh, I can't find his name now. Anyway, we got two really good letters about the zoning and the building permits that state otherwise, that things weren't followed as they should have been. But I really do think that we need a public hearing. I really do think that people really do need to come in person and like, there are all the letters that we got. Stacy could not, it would take forty-five minutes to read all the letters that she got from people, and some of these people don't live out of town. I know my neighbor across the street submitted a letter. He lives in Pittsburgh. There's no, you know, there's no way he could be here today. Of course, he could have zoomed, but I think he works. But I really do think we need an in-person meeting. And I really think this needs to go back or be scrapped altogether. I mean, it's unfortunate what happened across the street. It should have never happened. But in the hundred and fifty years that all these homes have been here, it's the first time something like that has happened.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I concur that we, I mean, we've talked about this point back to the Planning Commission, but we absolutely need to have a public and let people speak in person.
Anybody else, council, any other counselors? Okay, Mr. Franklin, maybe you can give us some, you know, some guidance as to a path forward. Like Ms. Foggo says, it would be impossible to read all these letters. And I don't know if we would get the true sentiments or this, you know, by reading the letters. Many of them were very well-written, very nice. And we appreciate that. We really appreciate that. But, and so, Mr. Franklin, what do you think will be our path forward?
I'm not going to express an opinion on whether the legislation should or shouldn't be passed because as I think most people know, I'm in that, that what would be the lakefront zone. My, as a person involved in drafting the legislation, I thought that a fair number of the comments about the specific language found in the proposed legislation were very helpful. You know, the proposal before you is, you know, arguably vague. It is arguably overly complicated. It could definitely benefit from some fine tuning. It really, the way this worked out is, you know, we worked out a draft. We did, you know, put the draft before Committee of Council. We put the draft before the Planning Commission. There wasn't a great deal of input along those lines of, you know, corrections or improvements of language. But now we've got those. So, I, what I would like to see is that council send this back to the Planning Commission level or to a Committee of Council to see if some of these public comments can't be incorporated in the legislation and make it the best legislation on this subject that we can create. Then bring it back to council for a full, robust debate with public input and then vote up or down, pass it or don't pass it. I just would like to see council vote on the best version of this type of legislation that we can, that we can come up with. So, that would be my recommendation to send it back either to Planning Commission or to a Committee of Council for revision in light of the public comments that we've heard thus far. And then bring a new draft to council for this type of hearing, debate, and vote.
Anyone? I think Stacy, or Ms. Senski, you collected legislation similar to this from other lakefront communities, correct? Was that?
I think, I think we all did. Mr. Timmonier, Mrs. Church, Mr. Franklin, and I all contributed several other communities' lakefront word, verbiage.
Okay, yeah.
I think I'll share the counsel back when we started this as well.
Right. And so, I know this, you know, this is just not based on a whim. We we saw what other people were doing, trying to incorporate some of those ideas. And because I think like Ms. Foggo says, this is an unfortunate situation that has occurred. And I know from the people that I spoke with citizens, some are concerned that this can happen again next to them. And so, that's what we're trying to do. So, does council, I like Mr. Franklin's suggestion, Ms. Church, Mr. Timmonier, Mr. Franklin, maybe if they can meet with the Committee of Council now that we have all these letters, all these suggestions, and we can maybe meet with, was this, Ms. Haynes, was this your committee?
It was, but I, honestly, when it was in my committee, it, it just fell on, nobody really commented. I just feel like it needs to be a part of the entire council, maybe as a work session.
That's a thought, too. Counsel, any ideas?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. So, I, you know, I think that's something we could do. That would be, what, seven of us? And then the three?
Mr.
Yes, go ahead.
Ross, I just may make a suggestion if you would like, because I don't see the Planning Commission taking all these letters and everything and trying to digest them in new legislation. I think that we need to, again, go back, try to put another packet of legislation together. And maybe at that time, have a work session, and maybe we can figure out a way to have that work session at a larger venue, maybe the library or something so that we can invite the residents of Walnut Boulevard to that work session. Talk about some things, how the new one looks. Still have to schedule a public hearing at a later time. Once we have what that legislation should look like based on everybody's input and then run from it from there. That would be my suggestion.
Mr. President.
Yes.
A few of the folks from Walnut Boulevard who submitted information would be definitely happy to be a part of this. And I can let those folks know.
Okay. So, so, I'll speak up if I'm misspeaking, but we're going to take the information from the many letters we received. Mr. Franklin, Mr. Timmonier, and Mrs. Church will look at those letters, incorporate some maybe into the ordinance that we are thinking about, maybe revise it, incorporate some of that into that, share it with council, and then council will have a public meeting, a work session that would be open to the residents of the Walnut Boulevard and other residents, I guess technically. And then we will go from there, discuss it further, and then send it to the Planning Commission at that time. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. They would recommend, they would make a recommendation. It would go back to council, and we would have another meeting like this. And I believe all that because of the changes in the COVID regulations, all that would be in public. Is that what we're talking about? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Sounds like, sounds like you covered just about everything, yes. I would only, I would only add that, you know, all of council has received all the letters. So, if there are things that are important to you, that some of those things were stated, please forward them our way so that we make sure that those things stay in the next round of legislation we propose.
Yeah, that's very good. Counsel has received all these letters, and so, to the resident, I don't, Ms. Senski, would residents who have submitted letters, would they be able to watch this tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So, we want the residents to know, you may not be hearing your letter being read, but we, council, each individual council member, Mr. Franklin, Mrs. Church, Mr. Tim, we've all received your letters. We've all read them. And really, that's sort of the reason that we're going through all this. We appreciate that input. And we're trying to respect that input to use it to improve our legislation, but to still, I think, to achieve the desired effect of, you know, improving our ordinance. So, with that in mind, any, any comments, suggestions from council?
Mr. President, can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes.
I don't have any suggestion outside of, I think that Stacy said while we, or the clerk said while we were here, you would be keeping an eye on emails or different messages coming in. Is there, are there any residents responding to any of this? Are they saying that's okay to not have their letters read or?
I haven't had any response by email, and I don't see anything on the Facebook comments either.
Okay. I just wanted to double, triple check to make sure there was no, nobody got upset because their letters weren't getting read. I know there's a lot of them. But I just wanted to.
Keep in mind, there's a little bit of a lag between what they see and what we're talking about. So, if something comes through, I'll make sure to bring it up in a different part of our follow-up meetings.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. That's a good, good point. Anybody else? No? Okay, so, I don't think we need a motion, Mr. Franklin, because we're not voting on anything, right? But would?
No, you just, you would adjourn the public hearing and when the legislation comes up, I would suggest it be tabled when you get to your regular meeting.
Yeah. Is it on the agenda, Stacy?
Mr. President, it is not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, okay. All right, so, is it in my purview, Mr. Franklin, to just ask that you, Mr. Timmonier, Mrs. Church, and with input from council, add to many of the comments, ideas, suggestions, the rewording the ordinance that was presented to us tonight?
Very good.
Is that how, that's how we would do that? We don't need a resolution or anything to order that to happen.
I don't, Ms. Senski, has this legislation ever been formally requested?
No, it was just to review the proposed chapter 1123.
Okay. Then, I think we're still part of that process, part of reviewing the chapter 1123.
Right.
Right. Because tonight would have been a public hearing, then we would have gone, then a council committee or a council member would have asked that we adopt this. So, we're not, we're not that far yet, so. Okay, so, is that fine with council?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. I, I can't see everybody at once like usual, so. I'm sliding back and forth. I'm not hearing. So, that's where we will go from here. And once again, to the residents, we appreciate your input. We are not, please don't feel we're ignoring you by not reading your letter, but it's because of your letters and because of your sentiments that we are going through these many extra steps, and we're happy to do that, to come up with a better piece of legislation that may make everyone feel more comfortable and maybe serve the purpose in the end or serve a different purpose. We'll see from there. Okay? All right. Then I think what we will do, what time do you have? Six twenty-five? All right, we will adjourn this public hearing. And, okay, okay. All right. And then we will begin at six thirty with our pre-council meeting. Okay? And then we will begin at six thirty with our uh pre-council meeting, okay? Are we ready, Jim? Okay.
You're all set.
Alright, thanks. Uh we're gonna call the pre-council meeting from uh Monday, J- June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh we will call the pre-council meeting to order. Ms. Sensky, will you call the room?
Yes, Mr. Roskovich.
Here.
Mr. Spielman.
Here.
Mrs. Foglio.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Timonier.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. Welch.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh we're already, we, we have a, a light agenda, so we um, we should be uh in good uh speed here, we will have at seven print, uh seven o'clock, we will have our monthly report from Ms. Christine Hill, our city health commissioner. Uh on the covid update and um we will have some minutes to approve tonight, right? And we have just a few pieces, excuse me, of legislation. Um, Mr. Manager, did you add some for today? Did I get the email?
Mister President, there wasn't, I think that was added last Friday, I think it was added, um.
Okay.
It's a, an ordinance for a purchase for the wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 that was okay, but that will be added to tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mi- and Ms. Sensky, you'll keep us aware of that. It's just one item, one additional item?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, alright. Wastewater treatment, would that be fifty-nine, would that be twenty, twenty-one, fifty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, wastewater, you'll, you'll tell us what it is, but wastewater treatment then.
I will, I'll ask for it in my report as well, Mister President.
Yeah, yeah, there we go, I'm just making my notes ahead, okay. Alright, Mister Manager, would you like to give us your report at this time then?
Sure, thank you. Uh first, uh, the first ordinance I'm gonna ask for is a partnership with the county uh to file the application with the Ohio Development Services Agency for our CHIP, uh Community Housing Impact and Probation Program grant funds. Um, we've been doing this partnership with the county, it's worked out well, um, so uh we're gonna ask to do that again, to file all the documents needed for the application. Uh what we were just talking about, um, the wastewater treatment plant, uh vent and flame arresters. Uh it's an ordinance with Business Inc. uh of Canfield, Ohio. Uh for the purpose of providing materials for two uh combination vent and flame arresters for the wastewater treatment plant. These actually go on top of the digesters, uh they help with the methane gas production, if the pressure gets too much underneath there, uh they will open up uh so that other bad things don't happen down there. Uh we need two of those things, this is a proprietary uh component based on the lid that we have down there, so uh unfortunately, there's no bidding this out. Um, this is the only company that carries uh the brand that we need that goes with the lid. Um, I wanna say it's twenty-two thousand dollars uh for two of them, they're over eleven thousand, I'm sorry. Twenty-four thousand dollars, uh they're over, uh I think they're eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars a piece. Uh so not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars for that purchase. Um, next is a CRA uh for uh ACMC slash Cleveland Dental for the expansion they're doing at their property, uh it's a seventy-five percent abatement for ten years. Um, they are almost doubling their space on Lake Avenue, uh which is a good thing, they'll be bringing in more staff as well. Um, so excited to, decided to see their expansion there. Um, one of the things, kind of piggybacks on what we were talking about earlier, uh and I know this went through committee, I think it was Jane's committee. Um, a new codified ordinance for residential new construction and additions. Um, we'd like an ordinance to authorize the new codified ordinance, chapter thirteen thirty-nine, entitled Residential New Construction and Additions. This kind of sets some parameters of size and different things like that, what would be considered new construction and what can be considered an addition, and that would also uh had been in place, would have helped with the current situation we have right now as well. Um. The next one is a change order number two with APO hora of Youngstown, Ohio. Um, it was quantity additions and deletions for work performed uh to the digester projects, uh contract. Uh there is a zero increase, but we changed the scope of the work, and it also uh increased the contract period until May fifth, uh twenty twenty-one, so we are finally complete uh with that project down there, but we gotta true up with the change orders now uh to close out the project. And lastly, I'd like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with IEM Risk Management Consultants uh uh for the city's health insurance program in the amount not to exceed uh ten thousand dollars annually for a period of two years. Mister President, that's all I have for my report. I will also, I'm sorry, um would also need an executive session to discuss uh employment and personnel at the end of the meeting, there'll be no decisions uh coming out of it.
We'll make that at the beginning of our meeting and then uh you and Ms. Sensky will remind us at the end that we will do that. Um.
Mister President?
Yes.
I, I have a question for the manager, um, this ordinance on, on the um additions. Um, is is there a reason for that? Is there a particular reason for that? Like, why we're changing that, why we're, we're, why we're doing this?
Yeah, so uh it actually, it, it, it better defines what an addition is and what is a considered new construction. Um, so I have to pull it up uh in front of me, I apologize, um but I think that if I'm not mistaken, it, it mentions a square footage in there.
Yeah, I think it did.
Yeah. It indicates that uh an increase in square footage of more than thirty-five percent of existing footage. It's not that it can't be done, it's just that it requires adherence to current zoning and side yard setbacks and so on and so forth. Uh, this does go to the, the situation that we were discussing earlier, because that's why what was built is uh classified as an addition. It was to avoid current requirements for lot frontage and setbacks. And of course, the uh, the addition is uh two thousand square feet bigger than the original structure.
Well, it's an addition now, it's an addition now, but it wasn't considered according to what this is, it was a new construction because it wasn't, it wasn't um. It wasn't connected to the house until just recently.
Right, and Ms. Foglio, that's what, that's why we're proposing that this new chapter um be instituted, because again, there's no definition for new construction and current construction in the existing zoning requirements as they stand today.
Okay.
So that's why that structure was labeled as an addition.
So yeah, it mentions thirty-five percent or more uh addition and then nine feet or higher. If your addition is nine feet or higher, it mentions that also, so I think both of those probably came into play in what we're dealing, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mister Manager, I, I um, I know we talked about several different ideas for uh Dr. Shelby Way, and ha- have uh, have you decided on how that will manifest itself? I know we talked about, you know, little signs above the street signs, or we talked about like a historical marker kind of thing. How have you decided to deal with that?
Um, I had a very brief conversation with uh Mister Patrick Haywood, one of the people that has presented to council uh on this, on this uh project, um, we are, we are gonna get together and finalize, he did have a meeting with the Shelby family. Um, but what the suggestion that we made, uh is actually, you know, Mister Franklin came up with was the signs that are similar to the Urban Meyer and Connie Schultz signs, uh possibly having one of those on the uh north and south end of the area that we're gonna be calling Dr. Shelby Way. Uh and then at the intersection of West Twenty-Fourth Street and uh Lake Avenue. Uh if you've seen, I think Cleveland does it a lot, where they put a picture of a person and then uh you know, this, in this case would be Dr. Shelby Way on a street sign that looks like uh the actual street sign itself. I think in that intersection there would probably be the most visible place uh to, to install something like that. Um, so that's gonna be my suggestion to them, like get a couple of those signs like that uh and have those uh in that area of West Twenty-Fourth Street, again, still by the hospital, still in the middle of our kind of medical corridor there. Um, I, I think it would be appropriate there. Um, but those are the two types of signs that we are, that I'm in, in discussion with them about.
Okay, good. Yeah, I was just curious, because I know, you know, obviously, we're leaving that in your hands, but I was just curious as to what was decided and so.
Yeah, we can, uh, wh- when something's created, we can, I can send you guys samples of what it would look like.
Okay, it'd be nice, yeah.
Mister President? I, I I have a couple of questions, which I don't know if I should ask now or later, so I'm just gonna do them now. Um, I, although I don't have a report for the economic development, um, our meeting this month is canceled, I do have some things from the park board that I wanna bring up, and I wanna bring up about the plaque, the North Shore Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. They did give us a plaque, so I'm gonna be bringing that up in our main meeting, and, and that's it.
Alright, thank you. Anybody, any other counselors have questions for the manager? No, I see the roads are being paved, uh West Fifteenth Street um in uh some of the others, so that's good, obviously, it's a good thing, so. And they're making a lot of work on uh Lake Avenue and the parking lot for uh, what's it called? Um, I lost my. No, the parking lot for uh
Lake City Plating.
Lake City Plating, oh geez, that's not good. Parking lot is the, is uh coming just about done. Uh any other questions or anything for the manager?
Uh, yeah, I do. I have a question, sorry, sorry to be a hunk, um.
No, no.
You, you brought up paving, are there any roads that are completed at this point?
They were, they're going around doing the top coats now. Um, I'm not sure if any of them are fully completed, because you do have to seal the joints and everything like that. Um, so I don't, I don't think we have any that are complete, complete yet.
Okay, that's what I wondered, thank you.
Anything else? And, and what, I think the uh Cleveland Dental news is a good news, are, are they going to the north? Of where they're located now or to the south?
Oh, I don't know that for sure, sorry. I believe it's the, I believe it's to the south.
Co- that's their covid clinic, but they probably won't be needing that.
I, I believe it is to the south, but I'm not positive, yeah.
Well, that's good, eh, they're taking it, that's great, they're taking up the plaza, so that's good, okay. Anything else for the manager? Mister Franklin, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, Mister President, I don't.
Okay, thank you, Mister uh Franklin. Ms. Welch is not with us this evening, did she leave anything behind, Ms. Sensky or?
Nope.
Um. None of our monthly things and none of like that, okay.
I'm sure she'll talk about it in the finance and personnel meeting.
Okay. And then uh Ms. Sensky has anything for us this evening?
I do. We'll talk about the meetings.
I talk about what?
Meetings.
Oh, meetings? Okay, and you're gonna do that at the, in the general meeting, at the regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay, alright, very good, and um uh, Ms. Sensky, how, um, I don't know if we have to, but um we, we received a lot of letters about the zoning changes that we were gonna make? Um, were, were a lot of them physical letters or were just mostly emails?
A few physical letters, a couple were actually hand-delivered, but I do have um addresses of those folks that either mailed them or hand-delivered them.
Okay. I'm just wondering how, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I already got another email from somebody who wants to be involved in the um process.
Okay.
So.
I'm, I'm wondering, do we, do we feel the need to send them a note saying we have received your email, we received your letters, or, or will we?
Oh, I've already done that.
Okay, alright, thank you so much, yeah. I think that's good, and then when we come to our next step. Uh, do you think we're gonna have to send out two hundred more letters? Uh notifying them when we have our next meeting, we probably will, right?
I would say that the next public hearing, since the, you know the proposed uh language is gonna be completely, or at least somewhat different, then yeah, I'll have to send those letters out.
Well, when, when the, like Mister Kimoney mentioned, maybe we'll get a big group together at the library, this or that, that'll just be uh maybe a Star Beacon could help us notify the public or whatever. But when
Yeah, and I'll.
When we come to this point of voting on it again, then we probably have to send out another letter telling people we're gonna vote. Uh you know, council is gonna vote or something.
That's right.
Okay, alright, just so that we know and the citizens know, okay. Alright, does anybody else have anything for council this evening? You know, quiet. Quiet group tonight, okay, so we um would begin our, our meeting uh in, what, about ten minutes, eleven minutes? Okay, Jimmy, you're gonna shut us off?
Yes, I will take care of that right now.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister President, you're all set.
Thank you. We're gonna call the regular meeting for Ashobula City Council to order. This is Monday, June the seventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Ms. uh Foglio, would you be, uh lead us in our prayer this evening?
Yes. Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today. And your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you. And so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Sensky?
Yep, today I cannot share the flag with you.
Okay.
So we can just visualize a flag and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will you call the roll, Ms. Sensky?
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Haynes?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mister Crawford?
Here.
Mister Spielman?
Here.
Mister Roskovic?
Here.
Mister Timmerman?
Here.
Mister Franklin?
Here.
Ms. Welch? Is absent.
All right, we do not have to excuse anyone from this uh this evening meetings. We have a quorum established. We have a sunshine law certification. We will have our presentation, our monthly presentation from Miss Christine Hill, uh the Health Commissioner for Ashobula City.
Uh, good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all. Um, I told you that I would eventually come to you with a glimmer of good news. Today's the day. Um, you know, Ohio really is hitting some milestones. Um, Tuesday, June second, uh most of Ohio's pandemic public health orders were lifted. And um, you know, Ohio is, uh our cases are trending down. Um, we're headed uh in the right direction. The state average per one hundred thousand people is um fifty-four point nine. Um, masking requirements, it's been a little confusing for some folks since the um, the orders were lifted. Uh, basically masks are still required in some settings. Um, healthcare settings, um, settings like um federal public transportation, uh airlines and buses and boats and in terminals. And you know, basically the CDC still requires uh and, and recommends, they don't require, they recommend that, that if you're not fully vaccinated, you should, you should mask. And you know, businesses and schools and, and agencies can, can set their own policies for masking. So I just think you just need to always have uh your mask with you and uh, you know, be prepared to dawn it if, if it's appropriate. Um, so you know, those, those are good bits of news. Ashobula County, you know, we are still, our average is still higher than the state average of cases per one hundred thousand. We're at eighty-three, eighty-three point three cases per one hundred thousand. So you know, we are, we are coming down a little bit, but it, you know, we're still pretty high for a small county with, with uh not a lot of population. Um, I can tell you a little bit about our totals. Um, in the county, we have um seven thousand uh three hundred and seventeen positive cases. We've had five hundred and fifty-eight folks hospitalized through this pandemic, a hundred and eighty-four deaths. And on the good news, five thousand three hundred and sixty-four folks have been um released with their symptoms resolved. Here in the city, uh I don't have my paperwork with me, but we are uh at about one thousand four hundred and fifty cases for the city. Um, we have a, a death count of um thirty. Uh, we have had no recent deaths, no new deaths. And our hospitalized count is uh right about a hundred ninety-eight, I believe. So you know, you know, we are hanging in there. Our daily um active cases are coming down. We're only having about ten cases, fifteen cases a day, which you know, is just fantastic. Um, so we're, we're very happy about that. So our focus has been a lot on vaccination, as you all know, um. You know, Ashobula as a county, uh, our, our vaccination uh percentage is forty point six seven percent. Forty point six seven percent. And I know we can do better than that. Uh, a little bit of a bright note in the zip code four four zero zero four, which I, that's the only way I really can get data for the city is by zip code, and I realize we share that zip code with others. But our zip code of four four zero zero four, we're higher than the county rate. We're at forty-four point three eight. So you know, we're we're holding our own, but we could do better and we keep working hard to get vaccine out. Um, we're transitioning from those larger venues, Kent State and Asheville Area City Schools, those venues where we did, you know, fifty folks at a time and we would do back to back to back to back clinics. Uh, now we are transitioning to community locations, smaller clinics more often. We're doing drive-throughs, walk-ins. Um, we are going to employers, holding clinics off-site at their, at their locations. You know, again, my staff is so dedicated, you know, it's, it's not unusual for us to have to get up at, at six or five-thirty in the morning to catch that shift going off. Um, and you know, and then, and then return uh weeks later to do their second doses. Um, we're also working with our long-term care facilities, our two nursing homes, to be sure we go in and capture, you know, new residents that are coming in, new employees that are coming in, because those are our most vulnerable pe- people, and we want to keep those vaccination rates up. Um, you know, we're doing a lot of outreach with our areas that have low uptake. We've held clinics in neighborhood churches. We provided Spanish translation. We've offered material in the Spanish language. And we'll continue And we'll continue to do that. Um, we have a lot of clinics, uh, coming up. Uh, we have one this Thursday, the tenth, from two thirty to five thirty here in the municipal building parking lot. It's just a drive-through clinic. Uh, if the weather would turn bad, we just hold that clinic indoors and there'll be signage and there'll be a greeter. Uh, and so nobody should get turned around. And that drive-through clinic is to capture some people who need second doses. It's also there for first doses. We have J and J and Moderna to offer at that clinic on Thursday. On Friday, we're taking part in a joint clinic with the County Health Department. Uh, we are going to go just outside the city limits to a church, a Nazarene Church, Edgewood Nazarene Church on Route twenty. It's right in front of the Town Square Mall, right by the Red Lobster. And we're gonna be there Friday afternoon from two PM to five PM. This clinic is unique because we are going to be offering Pfizer. Um, Asheville Area City Schools' last day of school, I think, is Thursday. So parents who maybe have been waiting, they wanted to get school done before they vaccinate their teenagers. This is a good opportunity to do that on, um, that Friday, the eleventh, from two to five. And so we'll have Pfizer, J and J, and Moderna at that clinic, and it's also a health fair. And then Saturday, the next day, we are having a large-scale community drive-through clinic. And this will be in the Town Square, at the mall, in front of the old Dillards. It's gonna be from nine AM to one PM. We're partnering with UH Hospitals, Ashtricula County Medical Center, and all three local health departments, Connyock City, Ashtricula City, and the County Health Department. And we're going to pull our workforces together and have this large clinic at the mall. And we will offer once again Pfizer, J and J, and Moderna. Um, the final, um, clinic that we have planned in the coming weeks, we're, we're kind of excited about this one. We're going down to the harbor on Bridge Street. And, um, this will be Saturday, the nineteenth, uh, from eleven AM to four PM. And, um, we'll be in the lot right beside Farmhouse Vintage. And Smash Adams Food Truck will be operating at the same time, so we'll have that. And, uh, we are going to be doing a drawing for Bridge Street Bucks that day. So anybody who gets vaccinated gets their name entered into that drawing for an incentive. And I guess I cannot talk about these clinics without talking a little bit about Vaximillion. So the Vaximillion, um, you know, uh, incentive program has been a, a real boost for vaccine. Um, if you don't know about it, it is a, it is a giveaway, a cash prize for Ohio residents, age eighteen and older, who've had at least one vaccine. And you go on and you register at, um, ohiovaximillion.com. You only have to register once. And then for teenagers twelve to seventeen, if they get their name drawn, they could win a four-year scholarship. Tuition, room and board, books, at a, at a public Ohio college or university of their choice. So it, it's, they're very exciting prizes, and I would love if somebody from Ashtricula would win it. It would be just fantastic. Would make my year. Um, so, you know, the exciting thing is that these clinics I just mentioned were still in time. There's still two more drawings. Uh, there was a draw, there's a drawing tonight. Uh, so that time has gone by, but there's still more, two more drawings coming up. And all of those clinics, if you get vaccinated at any of those clinics, you could enter your name into the Vaximillion drawing. So I did wanna mention that. So, you know, just, uh, a lot of, a lot of work's still happening, but we're just gonna do our very best to get, get the vaccine out. People are doing well with these vaccines. We, you know, ha- get reports of very mild side effects, usually don't last long, if at all. And, uh, you know, people are, people are really feeling more confident. When they get a, when they get a cough or a sniffle, they don't think, oh, my gosh, is this COVID? You know, they know that they have had the vaccine, that for, they've been protected. And, um, you know, that's a good feeling. So that's really about the end of my report. I'm happy to discuss anything or, you know, I'm, I'm all ears. If you have suggestions on creative ways to get more vaccine out to our folks. Um, I, I'm ready to listen.
What is, and, uh, Ms. Hill, a- anybody twelve or older, right?
Right. You have to specifically receive the Pfizer vaccine if you're twelve to seventeen years of age. So yes, twelve to seventeen is Pfizer. Um, eighteen and up could take Moderna or J and J. Yes, that's correct.
For twelve and o- okay, very good.
And, you know, we are trying to get the word out to, um, you know, the student athletes, you know, it was, it's been a really rough year for these kids, um, not only academically, but in, in their extracurriculars. Because, you know, when they play a sport and somebody in the team has COVID and they've had that close contact, then the whole team has to get quarantined. And it just has disrupted their seasons, disrupted their year. And the nice thing about being vaccinated is we wouldn't have to do that. They wouldn't have to quarantine. They can play on through because they have that protection. So, you know, we really, we really wanna stress that to, to the kids and the parents, that, that's just another upside to taking the vaccine is that, you know, your, your kids, not only their academic year won't get interrupted, but their, their extracurricular shouldn't either.
Ms. Hill, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
Uh, the numbers you were giving us about percentage of people vaccinated, is that total population or is that adults?
Um, I think that that is total population. I don't, Michael, I don't know. I got that from the, uh, website, from, uh, ODH's data set. It's a good question. I think it's total population, though. Pretty sure.
Now, some, uh, some commentators have said we're lagging behind other countries, but other countries only count adults, percentages of adults who've been vaccinated.
Well, I'll circle back and let you know. If it's, if the answer's different than the toe, than counting everybody that's eligible, I'll let you know. But I, I believe they're counting everybody, you know, that would be eligible. And they are counting, that's just at least one shot in, you know, so. And I'll tell you, our, our second dose, um, return rate has been very, very good. People, they're, once they get that first dose, they're usually very committed, and they'll come back and they'll get their second dose. We have some folks that we do have to work with a little bit. Maybe they're on vacation. Uh, maybe they just wanna, uh, wait a little bit, but we still try to get them in that efficacy window, uh, to be sure they get that, that, that full efficacy of their, of their vaccine. And, uh, you know, people have done, we haven't had a lot of problem with that. And a lot of folks have opted for the J and J because they just know themselves. They're either too busy and won't come back for that second one, or they're just not folks that like shots. And so they're like, one and done, works for me. So we've had great luck with the J and J, and that's been a very, very popular vaccine.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just had a question. So you said that, um, even though the, the, we've been, we've been improving, which is awesome. Um, where are we exactly, though? I know that, um, like about a month and a half ago, we were like number six or number eight, and there was like some color posing to it. I just wanted, wondered what the specifics were.
Yeah, sadly, we're still at nu- we're at number seven in the state of Ohio. We had been, we had improved to number, to nine, but we're at seven with that rate of eighty three point three, um, per one hundred thousand, so. You know, and I, and I think everybody does understand that, you know, um, there's some vaccine hesitancy among some of the populations that live in this county. We have a, a great deal of Amish folks in the South that, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think will consider, uh, getting it or, or, or are, are a little difficult to reach. Um, uh, we have folks that just, you know, for whatever reason, they're on the fence. Um, and we, you know, we just try to do a lot of education here to, to try to convince people that, you know, make sure they've got, when they're basing their decision on factual information. Um, that's all I ask. Base your decision on factual information, not something that you, that you read that might not be a good source of information. Um, but yeah, and, you know, we just, we just keep trying.
So is that like, is that red or is that a lower color?
So the whole, um, public health advisory system that we're all used to, um, about two weeks ago, the governor, uh, and the, the, um, Director of the High Department of Health decided to put that public health system, uh, alerting system off to the side, sort of retire it. Because they didn't feel like that data was as helpful as some of the other dashboard data that we have. So we don't have, um, those alerting levels any longer. You know, the, the yellow, the orange, the red that we were used to for about a year. Uh, but instead, they're, they're talking much more focused on these cases per one hundred thousand and the vaccination rates. That seems to drive a lot of, you know, the data and a lot of the decisions. And they do look at air, they look at things by zip code. They look at things by census tract. Is there a group that's just, you know, it, transportation's a problem, language is a problem? Um, you know, uh, whatever the hesitancy is, is there something more that we could do to, to get information or make it easier for them to get a vaccine? So that's sort of what we're focused on. We got an equity grant and, um, you know, we've been trying to use that money to, to do things like that, the equity push and make sure everybody gets the same opportunity to say yes or say no.
Are there any other questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Hills, as always, we thank you so much for coming and you, you know how much we appreciate everything you're doing. And so, uh, thank you again for being here. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks for giving me a chance to, to update you all. And, um, you know, next month, uh, we will hopefully be, next time I see you, we'll be live and we won't wanna be on Zoom anymore, so. All right, guys, take it. Have a good evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, um, may I have a motion to suspend council's rules of order?
So moved, Ward one.
Second, Ward four.
Ms. Foglio moves. Ms. Harris seconds. Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio? Yes. Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
No.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, so we will suspend council rules by a six to one vote. Thank you. May we have a, uh, motion for executive session to, uh, follow our regular meeting? Uh, and that would be to discuss personnel item.
So moved, Ward one.
Ms. Foglio moves.
Ward three seconds.
Ms. Young seconds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, so at the conclusion of this meeting, we will go in executive session by a seven to zero vote. And no, uh, business will follow. Uh, Ms. Sinski, do we have minutes to approve of?
Yes, uh, the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one regular meeting of the Asheville City Council was called to order at seven PM by the Council President. The Ward one counselor offered the opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance was recited. Members present were Ms. Young, Ms. Haynes, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Spielman, and Mr. Roskovich. Officers present were Mr. Timonier, Mr. Franklin, Ms. Welch, and Mrs. Sinski. Mrs. Foglio moved. Ms. Haynes seconded to excuse the Ward two counselor's absence and the Ward four counselor's absence on the roll call. Ms. Young, Ms. Haynes, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Spielman, and Mr. Roskovich voted yea. Motion carried.
I will move to adopt the minutes.
Seconded by Ward one.
Seconded by Mrs. Foglio. Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, the minutes are approved by a seven to zero vote and will stand. Uh, Mr. Manager, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, I would like an ordinance to enter into a partnership with the County of Ashtricula to file an application with the Ohio Development Services Agency to apply for a Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program Grant. This is better known as the CHIP funds for the county and city of Ashtricula.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Ward two, second. Ms. Foglio moves. Mr. Crawford seconds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio? Yes. Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
And Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Business uh, of Campfield, Ohio, for the purpose of providing materials uh, for two combination vent and flame arresters for the wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Ms. Foglio moves.
Ward three second.
Ms. Young was second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into a community and reinvestment area tax incentive agreement with the Asheville County Medical Center and Cleveland Dental Institute for a tax abatement at seventy-five percent for ten years for the expansion of a dental practice within the commercial structure at twenty-two zero three Lake.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Ward four. Ms. Foglio moves. Ms. Harris seconds. Any questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that item by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance, uh, to authorize the new codified ordinance, chapter thirteen thirty-nine, entitled Residential New Construction and Additions.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Ms. Foglio moves. Ward two, second. Mr. Crawford was second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
And Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to execute change order number two with APO hora of Youngstown, Ohio, for the purpose of implementing quantity additions and deletions for work performed to the contract uh, at the digester at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, in the amount of zero dollars, but to also increase the contract period through May fifth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Ms. Foglio moves. Mr. Roskovich was second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that by a seven to zero vote.
And lastly, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with IEN Risk Management Consultants, uh, here in Asheville, Ohio, as consultings, as, as the consulting firm for the City of Ashtricula Health Insurance Program in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars annually for a period of two years.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Ms. Foglio moves. Mr. Roskovich was second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio? Yes. Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes, we will add that by a seven to zero vote.
Mr. President, that's all I have for my report tonight.
Thank you. Mister, uh, Mister Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Welch is not with us this evening and did not send, uh, the, Ms. Sinski?
Yeah, so we were talking before about when we're gonna start, um, meeting in person. And, um, in November of two thousand and twenty, the Ohio House Bill four oh four extended the temporary law authorizing public bodies to hold meetings virtually until July first. And of course, And of course, Governor DeWine said we can uh, loosen the restrictions as of June second. Um, so we've been kind of, this month is uh, a transition month, I guess, for us, but among many confusing COVID circumstances, this was no less. I appreciate city council, administration, and the city residents who have demonstrated their understanding by complying with our decisions and building restrictions moving forward. I did um, question municipal clerks around the state of Ohio about their meeting setup uh, during this transition time, and here's what I found out. Several municipalities never stopped meeting in person. Um, they allowed the public to attend with restrictions such as social distancing and masking. Um, for some, only council and administration met in person. Um, but starting in June, the public may enter the building with those uh, restrictions of social distancing and masking. Um, some are even taking temperatures. Um, municipalities decided to keep June remote and return to in-person meetings in July with restrictions as set uh, except for in the building, and it sounds like maybe that's what we're doing as well. Um, several, even um, several municipal clerks asked me to share my survey results with them because their council and administration is unsure of the best course of action for their community. Um, whatever. Oh, I I just know however, we end up choosing it's it's for the um, it's based on uh, public health and it's um, and then continuing to ensure meetings are accessible. I mean, you've done a really, really, really lot of work since April of twenty twenty and um, and it's been a, that's all I could say. It's been a lot of work, so I I'm looking forward to the in-person, but um, you know, we also wanted to make sure to keep the public safe.
Thank you, Ms. Sinski. Anything else? Ms. Haynes, do you uh, have an economic report?
So I don't have an economic report, but I do have um, but some from the Parks Board. Um, top of the list, June twelfth and June thirteenth from eight to twelve, we're gonna be painting the the railings down at the beach. We do need volunteers. Um, so hopefully we'll see some of council members down there as well as other volunteers. So that's Ju- June twelfth and thirteenth, it's a Saturday, Saturday and Sunday from eight to twelve. Um, the Ashtria Bula Rotary would like to donate three benches to Highland Beach. And bands on the beach. I guess this is a question for Mr. Timmonier. Is there gonna be bands on the beach this year?
Yes, there will be. Uh, we are working on a schedule right now with Dr. Kull.
Is that being sponsored through ACM C?
Uh, they did give us a sponsorship last year and they told us to hold the funds over, so yes, it's sponsored.
So here here's the million dollar question. The Parks Board would like to sponsor um, two bands that have a different genre. Is that, how would they go about doing that?
Well, I think we first need to figure out how much the regular bands on the beach is going to cost this year. Uh, because the park board, I believe, had to supplement uh, in years past when we had some bigger bands. I don't think we're gonna need that this year, but we need to figure that out. And then um, they would have to find those two bands, put it all together and get it organized. Just a lot of permit with us.
Okay. And then lastly, I I know that um, Clay Street has not opened up yet. But I don't think the bands are opened either as a result.
That is correct, uh, and that's why the porta potties are down there right now. Um, we are being told they're gonna open on Wednesday. They were there all weekend cleaning it. Um, so we should be ready to go by this weekend.
Thank you. That's it. June twelfth and thirteenth, everybody come down and help.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Uh, Finance and Personnel Committee?
Yes, we will be meeting Friday, June eighteen, eighteenth at eight thirty and um, huh, I think we'll probably, we will do that in person. Because I think we have two guests.
Thank you, Ms. uh, Foglio. Uh, Mr. Crawford, there was no Public Works meeting last month? Did we lose Mr. Crawford? Pardon?
Sorry about that. Uh, yeah, we didn't have one for last month, and from talking to the members of the committee, we are going to have ours live in the August Police Conference room.
Okay, on June twenty eighth, okay.
Yes.
Uh, this, thank you, Mr. Crawford. Mr. Spielman, was there a safety force report?
Yes, I have a report. So we met Monday, May twenty-fourth. Um, we had uh, Mr. Emory Moore, Chief Stell invited Mr. Moore um, to explain his role during the the Police Department Candidate Interviews. Um, Mr. Moore has been working with the N double A C P as a liaison to the Police Department and Fire Department to bring diversity and develop relationships uh, between community members and the safety forces. Um, so he sat in on all the inter- on the interviews of all eight candidates for the Police Department. Um, he um, you know, he offered his input to the different candidates. There were two minority candidates that interviewed. Um, so Mr. Moore was there for all of the interviews. He participated in the interview process and learned a lot while he was doing it. Um, he 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 made a rec- recommendation that maybe the the folks that are interviewing for the Police Department, um, attend the Police Academy first to increase their experience for the interview process. Um, and he's also aiming to begin a process through the ATEC firefighter training program to help establish minority candidates for future fire department hires. Um, he he enjoyed learning about the hiring process and appreciated being in- included in the interviews. Um, Chief Stell also said he appreciated Mr. More, Mr. Moore's participation a- and the seriousness that he showed for the project. Um, all the other police officers involved in the process grew to know Mr. Moore better and also appreciated his input. Um, Chief Stell thought it was successful and plans to continue it into the future. Um, that Mr. Moore added that if the minority candidates are hired, the scholarship money that they have is available to pay for their Police Academy. And Chief Stell said it costs about five thousand dollars to attend the academy. So Mr. Moore's, um, we talked about this a couple of meetings ago. Uh, Mr. Moore's Scholarship Fund that they have set up uh, has plenty of money and it's a fund a couple of people to go through the academy. Um, kind of going a- along with Mr. Moore's report and from the the Police Department, uh, Chief Gruber from the Fire Department um, mentioned that he would like to start getting into the schools uh, to speak to ninth and tenth graders to you know, encourage kids that that are interested in fire and be firefighters that they uh, consider for uh, attending the ATEC firefighter training program. Um, and Mr. Moore just ended his his kind of input with uh, his appreciation that the city is offering and cooperating on this project and and looks forward to to helping in the future. Um, both the Police Department and the Fire Department offered their monthly report and all their their numbers and calls for service are on par with what they normally are. Uh, the Civil Service Commission is planning an entrance exam in September for the Fire Department. Um, anyone that might be interested in that exam can um, find it on the City of Asheville website, um, and they can uh, find a link if they're interested in taking that exam. Um, in new business, there was a a resident concern about Washington Avenue being too narrow. So the city manager and Chief Stell are gonna take a look at that um, and report back to us at the committee to see what their thoughts are. We also had a resident complaint about speeding on West Fifty-Eighth Street and maybe needing more speed limit signs. Chief Stell is well aware of the speeding issue as that is the most complained about thing they get in the city. Um, so he's aware that people are speeding. They just need more people to pull them over. Um, and the manager said that he's gonna look at the signs, the speed on the signs on West Fifty-Eighth and um, figure out if they need to post some more. Um, also from the Police Department, they've they formed a new, and I think people see it on Facebook, and I'm sure it's in the papers, the Ashtria Bula Police Department Narcotics Investigative Unit. Um, so the, so these guys are working real hard to get drugs off the street. Um, they're doing such a good job that they were approached by the FBI uh, to possibly enter into a memorandum of understanding with them uh, to collaborate services. Um, if that were to happen, some some of the police, the police officers from the, our Police Department um, would be granted some sort of federal authority so they could pursue cases outside of the state of Ohio. So um, it would make the process more streamlined for these folks to track down the drug dealers and get the drugs off the street. So that's something they're working on. And at some point, we might see an uh, memorandum of understanding come come to the council concerning the the Police Department working with the FBI. So that's exciting news. Um, they're working awfully hard to keep the streets safe and they're being very successful. Um, and then the last thing we talked about, Miss, well, Mr. Moore was there. He he had a couple of questions about the bike lane, so we talked about the bike lane again. Um, no new information to report concerning the bike lane. Um, our next meeting is gonna be, we're not gonna meet in July. Our next meeting will be July twenty-sixth um, at eight forty-five, and we're gonna meet in person. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman, yes.
Mr. President, um, just to elaborate on one of the things that Mr. Spielman talked about was was the partnership with the FBI. Um, Mr. Franklin, myself, and Chief Stell have reviewed the M O U that was sent to us. Um, there is really no funds that the city is going to expend to be part of this program. Um, pretty much the guys that we have dedicated to the uh, Narcotics Task Force will also be working uh, on on this unit as well. Um, so we are going to go ahead and execute that M O U. Um, it does not need uh, council approval uh, to do so because there are no expenditure of funds, but um, as Mr. uh, Spielman said, um, it is a great program. We're we're looking very much forward to it. Uh, they are bringing assets to us like cars and of course, all the uh, different uh, technology and things that they have access to. Um, and they will have a small office uh, in our annex as well, so uh, we're really excited about the partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Timmonier. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we will move on to the legislative part of our meeting. Ms. Sinski, you will help me out here. We have one uh, item on our second reading. Uh, to prohibit parking on E Sixteenth Street. The other items uh, twenty-one fifty-five, um, designating Dr. Shelby Way on Parta Lake Avenue. Twenty-one fifty-six, the new residential construction in addition language. Twenty-one fifty-seven, uh, partnering with the Asheville County for the CHIP Funds. Twenty-one fifty-eight, uh, tax abatement for Cleveland Dental in the Asheville Plaza. Twenty-one fifty-nine uh, is the wastewater treatment uh, funds. Uh, is twenty-one sixty the APO hora? No?
Uh, twenty, uh, twenty-two-one fifty-nine is the last piece for tonight's agenda.
Okay. All right, then the other ones we would uh, add next. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Sinski, for clearing that up for me. So uh, is it council desire to handle these items by consent agenda?
So moved Ward one.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, could we remove uh, that fifty-two out?
Remove fifty-two out?
Both that separate.
All right, so could we uh, can we vote on uh, is it, well, let's vote on item twenty-one fifty-two then, because that's the second reading. Ms. Sinski, will you read that for us?
Sure, um, ordinance number twenty-two-one dash fifty-two, an ordinance amending the traffic control map and file to prohibit parking on the north side of E Sixteenth Street between Harbor Avenue and Columbus Avenue.
Can I have a motion to waive the reading of the legislation?
So moved Ward one.
Ms. Foglio moves.
Ward three second.
Ms. Young was second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio? Yes. Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz.
Yes, we will waive the reading by seven to zero vote. May I have a motion to waive the charter requirements for two readings?
So moved Ward one.
Mr. President, point, point of, point of order, we're on the second reading.
Oh, all right. You're right, it says right there, a second reading. All right, can I have a motion on adoption?
So moved Ward one.
Ms. Foglio moves.
Second Ward four.
Ms. Harris? Seconds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
No.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz.
Yes, so that item has passed by a six to one vote. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. uh, Franklin for pointing out that uh, the uh, error on my part. Um, so is there a uh, motion for consent agenda on items twenty-one fifty-five through twenty-one fifty-nine?
So moved Ward one.
I'm sorry, hey, John, could you pull out fifty-six of that one? Twenty-one fifty-six.
All right, so we will, uh, is there consent agenda items for twenty-one fifty-five, twenty-one fifty-seven, twenty-one fifty-eight, and twenty-one fifty-nine? Ms. Foglio, will you move on that?
Yes, I will.
On those four items, and then I will second those four items. Ms. Sinski, please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz.
Yes, so we will handle those items by a seven to zero vote. Uh, may you, could we have a motion to waive the charter re- uh, waive the reading of those four items of legislation?
So moved Ward one.
Second Ward two.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Seconds, Ms. Foglio moves. On waiving the reading of the legislation, please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio? Yes. Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz.
Yes, we will waive the re- uh, reading by a seven to zero vote. Uh, to waive the charter requirements of two readings? Is there a motion?
So moved Ward one.
Ms. Foglio moves.
Ward three second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Young was second that. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio? Yes. Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz.
Yes. And on adoption, please?
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz.
Yes, so all those items passed by a seven to zero vote. Uh, now on ordinance, item twenty-one fifty-six, an ordinance enacting new codified ordinance, chapter thirteen thirty-nine entitled Residential New Constructions in Addition. Is there a motion to waive the reading of this? I will move that we waive the reading. Is there a second?
Ward two, second.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio? This is just for the reading, right? We're waiving the reading?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich.
Yes, we will waive the reading of this by a seven to zero vote. Now, can I have a motion to? Uh, waive the charter requirements for two readings?
So moved word one.
So moved by Ms. Foglio? Second by Mr. Roskovich? Please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
No.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Th- this is just to, we're two char- the, the two readings right now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, yes.
And Mr. Roskovich.
Yes, so we will waive the charter requirements for two readings, and now this will be on adoption. We will waive the charter requirements by six to one vote. Now, on adoption, please?
Uh, Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
No.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
No.
Mr. Roskovich.
Yes, so the item will pass by a five to, five to two vote. Okay, thank you. I think we got through that without much, did we do okay, Ms. Senski?
Yeah, pretty good.
Alright, we followed, we got every, thank you everybody for your input. Okay. Alright, uh, that concludes our legislative part of the uh meeting. Is there any new biz- the unfinished business is our lakefront residential zoning, which we have discussed. Is gonna go back to the, the uh manager, the solicitor in our. Um, housing uh department for uh Ms- Mrs. Church for further study. Uh, based on all of the comments we received from the residents. And then it will come to council, also with council's input. Is there any new bu- uh, new business this evening?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I just want to um. Discuss the Harbor High School property. Um, I just wanna know if other council members are aware of what's happening or what's gonna be built on the Harbor High School property. Um. I myself didn't know. I knew something was gonna be built down there. I, I myself didn't know what was going to be done down there. Um. But. Um, I'm not so opposed to. Um, I know you all can't see this, but there's gonna be houses built down there. And I'm not so opposed to. The fact that they're building houses. Now, these are single-family houses, not townhouses, not condos. But I think what I'm opposed to is the fact that they're going to cram seven houses. Onto that property. Um, I think that the frontage for to build on a city lot is sixty foot. And they're allowing these houses to be built on forty-one foot to fifty-one foot property. Uh, little, little parcels of property. They're taking the Harbor High School property and they're dicing it up into forty-one foot properties. And they're allowing seven of them to be shoved onto that property, and I have a problem with that. Um. I just don't agree with it. I don't think that, I think that that's whoring that property. And I don't think that we should allow that to happen. I mean. You know, I can see four houses being built there, maybe even five, but seven is really shoving them and, and. The fire department okayed seven houses to be built with ten feet being, you know, put in between them. I, I just think that's ridiculous on that property.
Thank you, Ms. Foglio.
Ordinance against that, Kim?
Well, I don't know. They, I don't know. I'm, I'm looking at it right here. I mean, this was approved by Mrs. Church and Mr. Timmanier and, and supposedly was told to. Um, the committee that, oh, council was all for this. And uh, that certainly didn't come out of my mouth because I didn't know what they were, they, what plans were had for that. Corner property until I asked for them last week. And the only reason I knew this was going on is because my brother's on the committee. And he was asking me about it, and I, and I said, I, I have no idea what their plans are for down there. And this is how I found out about it, is actually through.
If I, if I could chime in, Ms. Foglio, first off, uh, the manager and Mrs. Church don't approve these things and, and aren't the.
I understand that.
Um, it did go to the administrative board uh first for their approval. It has gone through the historic board already for their approval. Actually, it's been through the historic board a few times. Um, with, with what they're talking about, the concept. The concept of this is not much different than what the townhouses are on Bridge Street. It's called a zero lot line. Um. Proposal, uh, that property.
Townhouses.
I said the concept is like townhouses, okay? Um, it's a zero lot line proposal. Um, which that is a C-one property. Um, it's in a commercial, it's commercially zoned on that property. Um, and, and it did go through all of those levels of scrutiny to do that. Um, that, for as far as a return on investment, um, four houses would not. Would not suffice, I don't believe, for the property. I don't know their financials, but um, I would imagine if it was just. Four houses, somebody would have purchased that property a long time ago. Um. So it wa- it was not just coming up here, uh, and it was given a blessing. There's been several discussions on it. I think I've mentioned about this harbor property. Uh, either in committee or at council meeting before. Uh, I've even mentioned, actually, at the last meeting. Who said with the construction going on on the harbor property, when you asked me about the church on the opposite side of the road on West Third. I said that that was uh also a consideration for this developer. Um. So, no, this is, this has actually been going on for quite a while, the discussions on this, in committees of council.
Like I said, I, I, it's not so much what he's gonna build, it's, it's that he's shoving seven houses onto that property and that. You know, uh, and that we've turned down other people that would have wanted to build on a fifty-five foot. Frontage lot, and here we're allowing this man to come in here and put these, these houses, single-family houses, on forty-one foot. Of frontage property. And I mean, I, I just.
And those, the, the houses that you referred to that were turned down for that had very, very strong uh neighbor opposition. Uh, when we sent them the letters that, that this was going on. We had no opposition of the project. Actually, we had uh. Letters that were written in support of the project when we notified the adjacent property owners. Um. So, a- and that's why the uh administrative review board did grant that authority for the zero lot line. Uh, this is gonna be much like a townhouse slash condominium in that there will be, um. I guess you'd say like an HOA taking care of the property, not the actual look of them, Ms. Foglio. I'm talking about the grounds itself, which is why there's not the space between them. Um, the grounds and everything will be taken care of by an association, uh, so to speak. So, it's a, it's a form of. Housing in which it's not a, it's not a townhouse, it's not a condominium, as you stated, it's a house. But with same of, some of the same perks that go along with a townhouse, uh, or a, uh, or a condominium.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that at all. I just think that's. Whoring that property and shoving seven houses on it, and. I just, I, I'm, I'm just not for that. I mean. I'm just not. That's just my opinion.
I understand.
Um, Mr. Timmanier, so who, what's the demographic of who they're trying to appeal to for these houses?
Uh, pretty much every, uh, the young family just starting out or um. Older folks looking to retire. If I'm not mistaken, the price point on the houses is um. Close to two hundred thousand, if not over two hundred thousand, I believe is what they told us at the meetings.
So you're. You're looking older people if it's at two hundred thousand.
Well, young, young professionals in the area are also uh very interested in houses like this.
Okay, thank you, um. Anything else this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanna remind everyone that uh Saturday, June twelfth, this Saturday coming up, is the slice of summer for the. Historic Asheville Harbor. Uh, there's gonna be street vendors down there, activities for kids of all ages. I believe actually, Ms. Hill said they were gonna also be down there doing a vaccine clinic down there also. So uh, come out and support the businesses down on Bridge Street, please. And that is eleven to four PM this Saturday.
Mr. Pres- I have a couple of things.
Yes.
Um, first of all, I. I. Wanted to mention, um, we did receive a plaque. From the North Shore Ribbon Cutting. I think Stacy has that to display. It was to city council. Everybody can see it?
Yes.
And secondly, June seventeenth, the AGDA is having. Open houses on Main Avenue for empty spaces. Um, so if you're thinking of opening up a business, they're, they're having an open house on Seventeenth. That's it.
Thank, oh, thank you, Ms. Haynes. Uh, great, I think that's a great idea. Let's hope for good things from that, yes.
And Mr. Roskovich?
Yes.
I just wanted to read what um the plaque says because I'm certain you couldn't see it when I held it up. So it was uh from the Asheville County Metro Parks presented to the Asheville City Council. For its long time and constant support of the construction of the North Shore Trail and the Asheville County Metro Parks. And Mr. Timmanier got one as well. I'm sure it said the same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Senski. Is there anything else? Uh, I think we've sort of gone from new business to tell us something we don't know, which is good. Does anybody else have anything? Obviously.
I have a tell us, we don't know, I guess, then.
Well, good. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Are we moving into that?
Yes, we are, already.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just wanted to um share that, and I'll update as we go along as well, but um. There will be a Juneteenth celebration this year at Lake Shore Park on June nineteenth from eleven AM to five-thirty. Uh, PM or six, somewhere in there. Um, there will be guest speakers, artists, um, food, prizes, awards, all kinds of things happening that day. Um, the NAACP will be starting that event off, um, with the contest that they had. Um, with the art and the poems and all of those things. They're going to have the individuals come there. They're gonna present them with their awards and um. Allow them to share whatever work of art they had. Um, I hear there's a violinist, so I think that's pretty cool. Um, we do have a local artist coming that is uh pretty well-known in this area, so it's gonna be a pretty cool day. Um, again, it's gonna be June nineteenth from eleven AM to five-thirty PM. Um, if anyone's interested in learning more, becoming a volunteer, um, helping out, donating, any of those things, you can contact me. And I can direct you to the um, the celebration coordinators, which are um Sal Jackson and Aja Robinson. Um. I think for right now, that's all I have, but I know within the next day or so, there will be a flyer emerging, and I will circulate that first on social media, starting with Facebook.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. And that's Saturday, uh, June the nineteenth. Okay. And don't forget, Sunday is the blessing of the fleet, in, in its modified form, so. Lot going on, uh, as we slowly, slowly open back up, so. Okay, is there anything else?
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes.
On June nineteenth, the uh Community Cat Coalition of Asheville County is partnering with Country Neighbor and the Willowick Pet Food Pantry. From ten AM to noon, and they're gonna be handing out uh food for people in need and also um pets in need, so. Um. They have some strict rules, and you can um. Call me or email me if you'd like to know more about that. They also uh. Have fixed over two hundred cats countywide, and about half of those have been in the city. Um, so they've, they're really already started uh off to a good start this year.
Yes, great, that's, that's such an ambitious group. That's great, so. Alright, anything else? Okay, if you remembered like I did, that we're gonna go into executive session. For a personnel item, uh, did I remember that? So, uh, Mr. Timmanier, you will turn off the TV. And that we wish everybody to have a good week, a good safe week. Uh, if you haven't got your vaccine, get your vaccine and. Uh, stay safe. Okay. Are we back on?
You are all set, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. We have concluded our, our executive session. No action is being taken. So I will call the meeting adjourned. Everybody, please have a good week. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.